We are going to try to get. Too late this evening. Call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
All right, thank you very much. Our first order of business today is to thank a very important member of our board who will not be running for reelection tomorrow. But we want to acknowledge six really important years that you've been with us. So, Joe.
Why, thank you very much.
They are fairly tumultuous. Looking fairly tumultuous. But I also want to acknowledge all of the time that you, oh, you just said yes. You were our New Hampshire School Board Representative. You said yes to every negotiation committee. You said yes to every committee available to us and we really appreciated all of that work. And I am happy to say that this is, um. You're just changing your status within the district, but.
Yes.
For now.
Yeah, gonna get fingerprinted.
For now.
For now.
Well, thank you.
Never quit your job, you'll be back on the hook.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd just like to say that it's been a pleasure working with all of you. I enjoyed working with the folks in the district. I enjoyed working with my fellow school board members. It's been a quick six years. It seemed like flash by, but I guess everything happens like that nowadays. So i- it's, um, I, I just wanted to thank you all too because I have enjoyed my time here and I've, um, done my best. I, I, I think, I think I can walk away saying that I, I tried to do my best. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Joe.
So also worth noting, this happened in the last few weeks. We've had some pretty significant athletic meets happen. Our girls varsity team was second in the state in Division Three. Their coach, Matt Bear Torni, is the Division Three Coach of the Year, which is pretty amazing. He's done some great things with that team. And forgive me, I don't have the names, but we do have some all-state representatives from both the boys' and girls' teams.
There, and Ledger.
So Ledger's the second team.
Second team, and Claire Stewart's second.
Fantastic. And I know Luke St. Pierre was a runner-up.
Was a honorable mention.
Honorable mention, perfect.
Boys' team got into the four quarters, which was the first time since.
First time they held a home game. Not COVID-related in thirty years.
Wow. Wow, nice.
That's to have you off the ninety-four. We have, that was the year the group collapsed.
And they played in Bellows Falls.
Home game was actually in Bellows Falls.
Oh, so the roof is in the roof. Were you on the team then?
I. I was coaching. I walked in, I was the first one.
Oh, did you see it?
Wow.
My office. Somebody left the lights off in here.
And you had sunlight with sunlight. But also, most important, we have champions in the house. The boys' cross-country ski team are the state champions this year, so. So, lots of good things happening.
Will we see them?
Um, I don't think so. Not here. They're all skiing. I went on this gorgeous day. But our next order of business is actually in non-public, so we will be excusing ourselves shortly and we will be back. So I will introduce the motion to non-public.
So.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second, there were a mouthful.
Um, I just at this point would like to acknowledge that Missy does a phenomenal job of these. I really, uh, appreciated reading, especially the deliberative session minutes. I know it's not easy, so, thank you. All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.
I have to abstain on the ten. I don't believe that I would see her.
I don't think I was either.
I don't remember which one it was. Okay. Heard. All right, we have a lot of visitors today. Would anybody like to speak?
Don't do it.
I would like to acknowledge that we have Garrett Neal with us. He is running for
Ah.
A budget committee position.
Nice.
At large.
Face with the name. It's all the signs.
And we have Karen Schwab, who is running for a school board position. She's from Alston.
Now we gave her the wrong impression that there's cuff gates. In body over here.
Hey, that's just me. I, I just, it's just my sense of him.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Yes.
All right, if anything should come up and you want to speak, just let us know. All right, report of the administrators. Our superintendent's report.
Good evening again, everyone. I'm happy to report that NAMI, New Hampshire, which is our, um, the state suicide prevention organization. Well, we'll be giving the first of three workshops for, um, teachers, paraprofessionals, and others on April seventeenth. Uh, we will, uh, right now we have about twenty people registered. It will be the, the first four hours of the prevention. Then next year, in the fall, we were already scheduled to do a post-vention. And then the cycle begins again in the spring with prevention. So, um, I needed those kinds of things to, um, be completed. Add those to our suicide prevention manual. And so you will see the manual coming to, uh, to you in that, in the next few weeks for your approval. Uh, I've been gathering information and contracts for a board presentation on the twenty-fourth. Which will, um, we, we will be bringing you some information, including, um, funding or tuition rates for Lemster, Goshen, and Unity. Um, Lori is looking at gathering the information on what we've been charging each of these uh, communities over the last few years. And we're going, what we would like to do is, um, bring you some options of offering like three-to-five-year contracts with very specific rates for each of the years. So that not only can we plan better in our budgets, but these communities can plan better for their budgets as well. We, as administrat-, as the administrative team, we are working on professional development for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So before we start, um, the new year on July one, our plan is to have every single professional development planned. The dates, the times, um, the presenters, the attendees, everything for the school year. Uh, that way, when we, as the school year gets busy, all of that kind of thing is already taken care of. Uh, we're awesome. I'm also researching some, uh, exceptional teacher mentoring programs. That was one of the things that we identified in the administrative team. That we feel our, uh, teacher mentoring program really needs a facelift. Uh, so we're going to be looking at, uh, two or three exceptional programs and then making some decisions about how we want to move forward uh, to mentor our new teachers in the coming years. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for the desk? Seeing none, we can move on to the financial return.
But I'm just gonna put this up on the screen. So, um, I have, um, shared with you our routine financial report where we have monthly income and uh, expenses. Um, and then, um, I added in a quarterly and I, um, I didn't want to, I didn't want to monkey with like orders. So it's December and then next month you'll have the, you know, the third quarter of the fiscal year. Um, so I don't know. Did you have any questions on our, the routine? So. It's not going to. Okay. It's not, it's. Um, so. I don't know if you had a chance to look at, um, the quarterlies by community. Um, most of them have, uh, wage or, oh, I wanted to. I can't get it to scroll to the next page. I have a science student. Um. But you may as well take that down. It's distracting to me. The, these are all late in the, um, agenda for the board meeting, um, so the public can, can find the reports. Um, in Actworth, we did have, um, a little bit of change in our benefit selection, so we do have, um, a minor o- overage in our, uh, regular education, spending it in our health services. Um, but overall, we're looking at, um, uh, savings right now. At Alston, it's the same. We had a little bit of an overage for, uh, benefits, um, in our educational media services. Overall, we're looking at a surplus. Um. When we looked at Charlestown, um, we had, um, some change in benefits, um, in the guidance services. And I realized that, um, our guidance counselors receive four additional days above and beyond their contract, and I didn't get that budgeted in for this year. So there's an overage in, uh, the guidance, uh, section and the health services. Um, I needed to, I need to, to find out what that two thousand dollars is in the overage in the, the health services. Um, and then they're building administrators, the twenty-four hundred function. Um, there were some adjustments that were voted on and, and, um, supported by the board. Um, so those were budgeted for, so those are showing as overages there. Overall, we're looking at a surplus for Charlestown. And Langdon, um, I know we, we talked about this one during the course of the budget preparation. We had, um, change in staff and, and the wages and benefits, um, and because of the size of the school, that small change was pretty significant to the community. Um, so this community is looking at an overall loss, um, for the year because of the change in staffing and benefits.
Yes, that's important to point out.
Yes.
That we're not going back to Langdon to ask them for more money. They're being asked, although Langdon has a deficit for the re-year or something.
Protective assets, yeah.
That's going to be covered by the general.
Yes, that's how it works.
That's I know, so I'm just making sure everyone else.
Yes.
Those are dollars.
And I believe over the fifty years we've been in service, it's probably happened in every community.
At least once.
Um, so then in Walpole, we have an overage in our regular education. Um, we have some substitute costs in there, which of course were budgeted for. Um, and change in, uh, benefits and personnel. So, uh, but overall, we're looking at a surplus. And then at the high school in special education, we're looking at an overage, but if you'll recall, we have our, um, vacancy, uh, management is in that function for the high school to fairly distributed. Um, overall, we're looking at a surplus. Um, so, as you can see, I use the same format that I have for our regular monthly reports. I thought that that might be easier for everybody. Um, if you're, if this is not what you're looking for, please let me know and I can continue to tweak this. I haven't, I haven't built, um, so like cells. I haven't built the, the tools to generate this easily yet. Um, because I just, I wanna, like, get my tweaking done first.
Well, and it takes a lot to build.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yes. So the only thing that I would like to see us do as we get closer towards the end of the year is to have another call, because you, you, you have your encumbrances, but we should have projections over encumbrances, because for case in point, I'm looking at Walpole and it's showing facility operations, a surplus of a hundred and fifteen thousand. And is that because we're really not going to spend that money or it just hasn't been encumbered yet?
I've tried, so in facilities, there is a piece that, um, hasn't been encumbered, and that's the Johnson Control Vices.
Okay.
Um, each, each time I run this, I see the note to myself and I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's right. So.
But for the most part, I mean, like all the supply was encumbered right away. All the electricity, all the food costs, those.
Everything you know.
Those fundamental, like, known factors that, yeah, we have to spend it.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be great if we don't have to spend the full amount, but I'm gonna plan on spending the full amount. I don't want that showing as a surplus.
Absolutely.
Um, so, so repairs and maintenance, supplies, um, and again, these, um, for the Johnson Controls, those have not been fully encumbered.
Okay. Yeah, so, so. I'm used to doing it and or looking at it, right? When I look down and if I was doing it, I would say, okay, I know I'm not gonna end up with these surpluses, right? And so if you can't get the purchase orders onto the system, then just have a separate column where you're projecting, or the directors in those departments, whoever's doing that work, is projecting. Oh, I know I'm gonna spend this out, but maybe I'm waiting for three quotes and I don't wanna put it in and adjust it, right?
Right.
So that way it gives you a column where you can make the adjustments without having to affect the actual finance system and have to go back and change it.
Okay, and you would want to see that column or is that?
Yeah, or, or you can add it into your encumbrance call. So, so I don't make another one, because you know it's.
Right, right.
So I just put encumbrances with projections.
Okay.
Because if I'm getting the actual report or if I'm, if I'm running the actual report of that fiscal year to date and posting the whole report, the line item report, you know, Joe Schmo and Jamie can go out and look at what the actual encumbrance is, and then I know whatever the, if, if it doesn't match, that's the projection.
Right. Okay.
I mean, but that's just me, so if everybody else.
Well, I, I mean, like, I want, I want it to be back, so.
And I do think that's the full picture we're looking.
It's the full picture, right.
Which I think.
It's close.
With the, yeah, with the exception of the lease payments, I think that I have, I think this is.
Captured most of it.
Picture, because that's annoying to me and it's something that I, but, and very, very persistent with at the beginning of the year. Like, we have to, um, uncover everything. Right.
Well, this is very.
Yeah, I remember a time when we didn't get things like that.
Right.
No, no, this is awful.
Well, and, and as someone who gets very confused when looking at any, looking at that big, huge thing.
No.
It's, it's very, it's very nice to just be able to say, oh, okay, and, and I can, I can see what stuff is, and then if there's a question, I know where to ask.
Okay. And, you know, and if you have questions, I can dive in deeper, but it just, it does get confusing. Trying to compress all of that.
I like it walking down my town.
Yeah.
I really like it walking down my town.
That way we can specifically read out specific things. Okay, so, um, are we still looking at a quarterly report like that or? I think so.
I don't think we need any more than quarterly. You already give us a lot of reports, but to get a snapshot picture for quarterly is, is good.
I think the only time it would be more than quarterly is if there was, like you said, a bit changed. If there was any big change, but you would do that in the overview.
Right.
I know at one point we talked about having a, a look at ten years back of these numbers, a report of that.
So I, I'm sorry, I thought that was in conjunction with our feasibility study or reorganization.
Well, it will be, but I think the board needs to see it also. So when that comes out, can you include that in the board, the next one?
Okay, it will not be available for the April report. I don't think.
But I think that's fine. Don't.
Okay.
Right, because you don't wanna run it once. You don't wanna run it at three quarters. You wanna run it at a full year. You could go back to last year and run it again.
Right, so at the, well, this is the three, three quarters.
This is third.
Right, so the, the next quarter report.
Which would be July.
July, right.
No, the thirty quarter, no, next month there'll be the third quarter report, because this is second quarter.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so March.
Sorry, did not intend to confuse that.
Yeah.
So, but yes, I would like to see.
An annual comparison.
Yes.
Back to historical annual data.
Yes.
That you're in.
Yes, thank you.
I, how long have I been gone? I have that.
Okay.
I have that through the year I left.
Okay, I will look in your folder because.
No, I have it on my stick if it's twenty-five years old.
Oh, I don't wanna go back to twenty-five.
Yeah, no, but I mean, I have.
You could share that with me. Mary would love that, I'm sure.
Yeah, because I won't look at it if you do twenty-five years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's coming.
Okay, so then if, I guess if there are no other questions or feedback that I'm done with my finance report, I will later in, um, there's one question on the next one. Yeah, old business. Let's talk about the, the, the.
Yeah. Yes.
All the pipe.
I wish, send a pipe. All right. Next order of business is, uh, discussion of the reorganization study that we've had quite a bit of interest. I know, so we feel every committee has fully, as we hope yet. So. Check in with everybody you know from my month who also throw their name in. We're still accepting people. To come in.
Anybody has articulated what committee they'd like to be on, so I'm thinking, we need to hold your kickoff meeting. Maybe that's the time where you kind of.
Put people on each individual subcommittee.
Saying that the people who have expressed interest not all have, have articulated which committee they wanna be on. So I'm thinking maybe that's better at the kickoff meeting where you can kind of organize the committees further.
You, you send us a list of who signed up because.
It's in your folder.
It is, y'all.
It's always in my folder.
It's in the folder.
The board doc folder.
And that's up as, as of today, because I know.
Are we gonna send them? Are we gonna? Are we gonna send them invites to come? Or they're already known?
Um, so. I can. I wasn't sure what the board wanted to do from here, so, uh, my correspondence with people have just been that you're gonna discuss it tonight and that I would be back in touch. So it depends on, I wasn't really clear.
I will.
It was the board's intent to accept everybody to come in and then, or what, so that, I was hoping to get that.
What's your question, Charlie?
I don't have a question. There, there'll be another member because there has to be a Charlestown Select Board Member.
That's what I was hoping.
I made it clear to them and apparently nobody stepped up, so I will ask them again.
Which one will do so?
Would like to be a part of that.
Fantastic. Um, but we also know that until the fifteenth, which is town meet, a traditional town meeting game, we don't know. We're doing this for sure. We're not, so we won't know which study we're doing until.
Oh, after tomorrow.
No.
So we may or may not have a kickoff on the seventeenth.
I don't know if that's better or worse, okay?
Isn't it St. Patrick's Day?
It is, but listen, it's such bad. Would you rather have the other? No, I don't want, no. No, I would assume I'm gonna be here on the seventeenth, is what I'm assuming.
Go ahead.
I have a favor of inviting everyone on the list and then, because our kickoff meeting, we can't talk about the expectations and we'll talk, like, talk out a conversation about what's gonna happen. And that way some people might read themselves out just because of the. Already in time person. Yeah, so it's still. At that meeting, we're gonna talk more about that.
Yeah.
Would it? Um, would it be appropriate? I, I don't, I only see one person on here from Actworth, and so, um, I'm just wondering if it would be what, which is, was a select board member, right? And so, um, I'm just wondering to try to, for me to draw up more business from Actworth, um, would it be okay for me to put on the Actworth Facebook page the letter about, oh, yeah, go for it. It's been circulated all right.
Right.
Are you having a meeting tomorrow night?
No, I have a meeting tomorrow night.
We're having a meeting. I'll bring it up at town meeting, but that, that's a select group of people, but it is people, but, um, and the people that read the Facebook page don't look. I mean, so. Yeah, I just, I wanna, I didn't wanna step on anybody's toes for, for stuff out there, so.
No, I think any way we can, uh, get this out in the public that we're looking for people to participate is a good thing right now.
All right, I'll put something up at storage.
Okay, so a review of the timeline. And currently, depends on what happens in the towns. Seventeenth, we have a meeting, and from there, it's kind of fast and furious. So I think the timeline we had set up was pretty good. Is there anything else you wanted to add that we were changing on that?
I had to make sure that the board reviewed it and then. Know it's still appropriate.
Fantastic. Are there any other questions on that at the moment?
Till we crash and burn, yeah.
Okay.
Hold on.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be good.
Hey, we gotta talk.
All right, next order of business is the high school pipe restoration update. We have Bill here. Do you want to present that to us? That would look, yeah, oh, so that will be Lori.
Bill says, no, I don't.
So I, I heard that loud and clear in that look.
Your face folder, there is a summary of the.
I talked to the company today. And they, oh, it's still good. And, uh, they are worried about price increases.
Yep.
So they said that this if I had them hold, maybe they should hold it for us. And if we approve it tonight, they will hold this. But after that, they don't feel about the pricing, so maybe we'll have to reevaluate everything. We don't think we're able to. They, they didn't say they could do it and haven't finished during April vacation.
And you're talking about Rowell specifically, because that was your recommendation.
It's about a fifteen-foot area that has, that's where part of our problem is. That's where it gets part of that.
Read a big motion to, for you, Chris.
Can I have a question for you?
You can. And then just hold the note.
Oh, top discussion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from the public, Royal Plumbing.
By Rowell.
Owl Plumbing, all the repairs to the super long device.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep.
So, because this is a sore subject, right? I just, and I appreciate you putting how we're gonna finance it here. I'm curious how closely the percentages line up between the oh, oh, three and the four hundred. Because it looks like we're.
I, I would have to look at that. I just, I didn't, I don't have any place in the.
No, I, and I understand that, and I appreciate that, but before we approve any transfers, I think let's look at what the percentages are, because perhaps Lori, we just let it run over and we let it run over and come out of surplus.
Yeah. So how can we approve it?
Yes.
With the intention.
Yep.
Understanding that the, we might change the method of payment, payment. Yeah, I won't, I won't do any budget transfers now because I'm not getting approval for that.
Right.
Um, so, but we can move forward with the work and then I come back to you with.
Right.
More.
We're just, we're approving an over-budget expenditure basis, knowing that we're gonna cover it with other funds.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we can approve it.
Yeah, I agree, angry.
For Bill, which might be the quickest thing you've come to us that we've been able to do. For you.
That's pretty, that's hard.
All right. Seeing no other questions? How do we vote? All in favor?
I.
Any votes? All right, thank you for your work on that, Bill.
And Lori.
And Lori.
Yes, and Lori. There's lots. Okay, uh, just an update on our superintendent search. Uh, we have closed the application process. We have a few candidates that we are working on scheduling with. And there will be more updates to come as soon as we have those dates scheduled. Is there, is there anything anybody else wanted to add for that? Seeing none? Deb, was there anything you wanted to add on that topic? No. Thank you.
And just one thing, just for the public, that there will be a chance for the public to have input.
Yes.
Yes.
So that letter did go out laying all those things out, but to reiterate, there will be a process where members of the public can meet candidates out of part in this process. Thank you. All right, does anybody want to take these three policies as a bundle or separate? What's that?
Yes.
All right, then I will introduce.
Make a motion to approve, uh, policy changes for IGB, retal竭ction, specific material, IHAM, Health Education, and Exceptional Form Instruction, GBEED, Employee Use of Educational Websites, Social Networking Websites. G E B E D, employee use of educational websites, social networking websites.
Okay. All right, are there any questions or concerns that anybody has?
Um, on the I T P, um. I I. I understand the uh spirit of of what's being written here, and I think it's presented in a very. You know, professional and kind of non-confronted way towards a parent, you know, we want to be respectful of uh differing. Opinions and and parameters. Uh, that being said, I do think that there would be value in. A, the board stating within the policy that while this is a parent choice. That the curriculum that is being presented is done so for the benefit of students. Um, and and again, not to be combative, but to say there, the board sees value in these things, that's why they're there. Um. And I think that. Review of the word appropriateness. Uh. Conveys to me as a reader that why is there something inappropriate? You know, if it's something that a parent elects to have their kid not attend or be privy to, um. That's a, that's a parent choice. Um, I think that there's a little bit of danger in having. The word appropriateness put in there. Uh. And then uh the last paragraph that says parents who wish for a particular instructional material. I think it should say parents have formally communicated, uh, you know, a request. You know, you know, for an appointment to review the instructional or informational material. I just think that's a little, it it conveys that we will take their concerns seriously, but there there is a procedure. That means.
Oh. Order. Can you make those in the form of a? Amendment to the motion so that we can vote on them, we push it.
With my specific.
Word of dead.
Wordy.
They don't know.
Why don't we call that one?
It has to go back to the policy committee.
Yeah.
It can't be amended here.
You can.
But it's easier because we just took them as a block. To pull that one out. Bring it back. And right there.
You make a motion to pull that one from the block.
I would like to put forward a motion to pull um I G E from the voting block. For policy approval today pending. A review. By the.
Well, you just wanna pull it out and then we'll get a second.
Right, so point of order, though, you've got a motion on the table already, right?
Yeah.
So I think you just, can you, I think it's better if you just rescind it and put forward two and leave that one behind, or revise your motion?
Yeah, well. We can take them all separately.
Just revise that one, I don't think we have a problem.
So we're not. Or send my motion. And only put forward I H A M and G E B E D.
I have, send the second. And then the second, an additional motion, thank you, all in favor?
Bye.
Thank you. All right.
And then maybe. Any can offer up some in writing suggestions?
Take a break it back.
Yeah.
If you want me to, the motion is to be specific. Bring back, so I would like to make a motion um regarding policy I T P. That pending. Review of. Suggested edits. Able this. And do you wanna put a date?
First you get a book.
Yeah, for a vote for April fourth first, so the fourteen of April, pending April fourteenth approval, a review in. How was that, I see, that was great.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Did I hear a vote from the rest of the board?
Hi.
I, it's weird that we're not doing a roll call because everybody's in person.
I know.
All right. Thank you for that, so for the remaining two, were there any other questions or concerns?
Just we get asked, superintendent asked the principals to circulate G E B E D with. Staff and faculty and wonder if they have any feedback that they received. Page.
So um we did look at this during our administrative team meeting. And then we sent it out to. Uh, faculty and staff through the associations. And we did not receive any uh feedback.
Neither positive nor negative.
Right.
And. So seeing no other questions or concerns? All in favor of these two, I mean, Tuesday. Go ahead.
Good, good.
So, yeah, I didn't mean the, I meant a few policies, um, but Jane, Jane's taking another one to with it.
Maybe this isn't a policy question, but do we have a? What would be the uh? Protocol or procedure if there was a concern brought either to a building level principal or the board that the staff had acted. You know, uh, in violation of this, what would be the due process? For staff number? Because people, I gotta tell you, people have different issues on what they find to be egregious.
Very true, we'll go to the superintendent.
Yeah, um, so. Uh, this does happen. And it it depends on what exactly it is. Um. Anytime someone, again, depending on what it is, but our first line is to always educate. And have a discussion. So. Let's say we've, somebody posts something online that that we are concerned about. That possibly violates the policy. What we do is we bring them in, of course, they can always have their union rep with them. And we have a discussion. Uh, about what they wrote, what their perception was, we also try to give them, if they have incorrect, if they're posting. Incorrect information, then we give them the correct information. If we feel like the person understands. Uh, and. Uh, we don't foresee it happening again. Then there, there may not be anything other than that discussion, however, if. Uh, after a discussion, another post is put up by someone, then we start following a progressive discipline. Does, does that answer your question?
I I mean, I feel confident with you in the helm, Deb, my concern is that. You know, in in approving this policy as it's written, if somebody were to get in your position that. You know, would potentially not honor. That uh kind of ethical and uh. I I guess. Um, thoughtful approach. Um, I just, I want, I want there to be recognition that people have First Amendment rights.
Exactly.
Be a little bit more specific about what is appropriate and not appropriate.
Okay. All right, Jane.
So. You can do that in an R in the regulation, which is the backup piece to the policy, so I mean, this, the superintendent, when the administrators could. You know, come up with like an outline of this is what we'll do if this happens, or these are the definitions of what's included in the policy. So, so they can do an R, a regulation that doesn't necessarily have to be voted on by us, but we could, you know, see it for. You know, that way it standardizes how you treat it.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be an excellent way for us to ensure that there's some. Um. That that as the district moves forward, there's some consistency there, so we we certainly can do that.
I don't want someone to be looking at the district as a potential employer.
Sure.
And go.
Not going, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna tell me what I can and can't say.
Right.
I think to be thoughtful about what the impact is on the, it can't just be that people don't like the opinion, but. You know, is there a tangible measurable impact on educating students? And if there isn't, I feel like that's overreach on our. So I think that's kind of a uh. An important part of the review process, if something does get brought forward, and just like we do discipline with kids. You know, but. Somebody making an off color remark is different than, you know, making a threat to the school board, so I, you know.
Absolutely.
Uh. Defiant offenses, and and again, showing a direct impact to to our responsibility in education. Um, because sometimes people are disturbed, it's not a legal. Right, um, third, um, all right.
No, I think it's a great point. You know, I mean, we've both been in this business long enough, right? I mean, you can't fire a teacher because she's wearing a hat full of beer doing handstands on a desk. Right? It's, parents don't like seeing that on Facebook, it's very concerning, but you can't fire her, right? I mean, so, you know, you're right, it has to be defined on, you know.
Just to save us headaches too.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna get into these legal conversations with people, that's going to cost us a lot of money.
Sure.
Whatever brand sales I have left and, you know, again, the money at three, four hundred dollars an hour of debating First Amendment. Issues gets real expensive.
It sure does.
So do we want to, yes, with the request that a regulation be created in the next six months or so, I'm not sure what an appropriate timeline.
I think they probably do it. Within, you know, by July one, when you roll it back out.
I think so.
Target.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, when you roll out your new contracts or whatever, July one, because.
And there has to be written acknowledgement from every employee that I have received these.
Yes.
Simply sending out is not gonna be enough to say, no, you said you read this and your your signature says that you will, you know, adhere to.
Well, I think, don't you do them through, we do policy. What's the name of the program, I can't even remember. We do that too, you can put your own policies in there.
Back to some, oh, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so we will. Do we need to review that? We just know.
I, we won't review or accept it, because boards don't usually vote on ours, but they could share it with us so that if we have any suggestions, that would be wonderful.
Yep.
All right, are there any other questions on uh that policy or on G E B E D? Seeing none? All in favor of adoption of those two policies?
All right.
Bye.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
Motion.
So I have a second. I had one question about it, so when there's a transfer, is that their new place? That's where they're going to?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, we have our food service R F P up for review, do you wanna give a quick update now?
Yeah, I'll just settle a little bit, a little background, so every five years, we have to go out to review work, we become unhappy with our, it gets. It's an annual renewal process, so I can go up to five years. Last year, given the state of our affairs, uh, I was granted a one-year waiver. Um, so now we're in year six, and so we have issued the R F P, R F P. It's written with strict guidance from the state. And um they review it. And it's been posted, it's been on our website, we had a mandatory walkthrough for anyone who was interested in bidding, really had to uh. That is just kind of what I expected, um. And so they they watched, uh, Friday, they watched through this with us, um. The R F P has criteria and scoring guidance written into it, uh, but we need to have a committee to uh review this. Um, the committee is going to be, um, Scott's gonna be handling this, he, he's a finance manager and he um did most of the R F P work for me. Um, he was involved in uh walkthrough and he'll be uh heading up that committee in the process. Uh, but we're. The bids are coming in on the ninth of April, and we wanna have a meeting that evening. Uh, to review this because we need to make a recommendation to the board on the fourteenth, because I have to have a. Um, draft content back to the state for their review and input. The beginning of May. So it's a very quick turnaround, so I can't, uh, we can't let this lag and wait until the end of April or the beginning of May. Uh, we have.
Should've done it sooner, because that's a thing we would have put Joe on. Joe.
I.
I appreciate, I know.
We are going to miss you.
So I know, so we're gonna, so Scott will be on it and Kevin and Brad, I think, have volunteered to be on that and we're looking to put a nurse on it.
You're gonna put a nurse on it or?
Um, I don't remember, Deb, were we talking about a nurse or were we talking about a community member? I don't remember who we were looking at for the fifth person.
We were, we talked about a community member. Uh, we did als, I um also have um. Uh, Kevin Hicks has has uh. Raised his hand to to be the principal rep. Which we appreciate.
I think this would be a good assignment for a new school board member. Whenever we come on the board, I think this would be perfect for them.
So your meeting is the ninth of April, so can we wait till the twenty-fourth and we will have our new board members?
You could wait to to put somebody on there, we just need to make sure that people are there.
April, we have a new board member.
Right, so the twenty-fourth of twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth.
When we have our board, we ask somebody.
Want to see how we work, Karen? It's a matter of what we have uh scheduled um a meeting for five thirty to probably, I think maybe a couple hours. To review the uh two R F Ps and score them, and so we have a recommendation to present to the board.
I'll do it.
I was gonna say, the eventual cataclysmic. Volunteering, I will literally show.
Jane wants to go. And I would just wait, just done a bunch of just ways.
Add it back to the agenda.
Yes, we'll revisit.
But we will remind you that what you both said that in public. Just so you know. Okay, wonderful.
Leaving the six minutes.
Um. One sad thing that we must also address, now that Joe is no longer going to be. Our board member is that we need a. Second person to be a designated to sign a manifest so that uh checks can be issued, I'm just happy to continue doing so, but. Joe is gonna break it down, are you willing?
I'll do it until the twenty. Twenty-four. I just wanna have everybody who's on the board.
I can appreciate that very much.
But, um, just.
So I did say on your list.
Signing manifestos.
I do my hands on them.
They're very nice people over there.
Thank you. I agree. As long as Julia can attend with me, I can do it. Oh, it's very easy, I'll have my assistant, there's usually candy that she can read while you're signing.
Wait a minute, what?
Okay, so. I, Kevin has volunteered to do it, at least through the. The twenty-fourth, when we can have this discussion again and set us.
Very true, because I might not be on the board up. Wow, you hear the room just go.
I just said it.
Just saying. You don't know.
So we do know the button. Okay, fantastic, thank you, Kevin. Um, director openings. I don't.
No, I think we did that in, yeah, M D.
Yeah, do we need to do anything without under new business? Sorry, I don't.
I I think that we should just, um. It it would be helpful just to announce publicly that we're opening the, uh, we'll, we will be soon posting the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. As well as Director of Technology positions.
I think you did wonderful, Deb, thank you, yeah. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, and okay, next order is the electricity contract?
Yes, so electricity, uh, I was hoping to have some rates for you tonight, I do not have them yet, they're still working on calling bids together. I would like to enter into a multi-year contract so we can like. Uh, ensure some stability at this rate. Um, I suspect that it. We should have done this a few months ago, but, um.
Well, so, can we just, you know, for the public here, just explain what.
Okay, so what I have is I have been working with somebody who um is seeking bids from multiple suppliers. Um, and that should also include some green bids, the green, if you're, if you're. Committing to green energy, it's usually a little more expensive, but not. Not a lot, and it does reduce our footprint. Um. So, um, they, we can enter into a year, an eighteen month, twenty-four month, three year, I think they might even go up as far as five year. Uh, so what I would like to do is enter into a contract with them for. Um, so what I would like to do is enter into a contract with them for an extended time period. I was hopefully, hoping to have rates to present tonight so we could take a vote tonight. I don't know if there's the comfort level to allow me to move forward without bringing it back for the vote before I move forward. I mean, like, when they send me rates, can I commit?
Go ahead.
So, no, you're not, because I do this. Um, yeah, and the rates they send you are only good that day.
Right.
And the rates change every day. Um, and they have to know, you have to give them an answer by two P M, because that's when the rates in the market's low again. So, um, and the, and boy, they're volatile.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's a bummer. I signed a few months back. But who knew, right?
Who knew?
Um, they're really volatile, yeah. So, so I would be comfortable allowing Lori to make that decision. I would caution going too far out just because they're so volatile right now, but I understand.
Eighteen months, twenty-four months.
Just had a sixteen percent increase. I mean, this, you know, the state rates.
I'm okay with a twenty-four month.
Yeah, yeah. Who, what, who's the, is it CES or?
No, right now we're telling.
Power, um. Uh, U M G Vault Energy?
Um, no, that.
Are we able to assign within that agreement? Like, you know, twenty-four, like twenty-four months, like Shelley said. But are, are there any provisions that go in there that say, you know, providing rates don't exceed X?
No.
No, so you're just getting to live.
You are, you're in it, but it does have to have an exit clause, just because we can only, you know, we can only commit funds for the year that we're going into, right? Because you're only budget for that one year. But they'll all have exit clauses. It's just a matter of what the cost is to exit.
Well, on that note, these don't have a specific cost, like it doesn't cost us to go into this contract.
No, that locks in your rate.
Right, so.
It locks in your rate. Like I just locked in our rate up there through twenty-seven. Right, I locked out through twenty-seven.
So the market can go crazy if it's locked.
And it's locked, nothing changes. The only time it can change is if you change the parameters of what you're using by putting in solar or wind, or if you change the manner in which you're, you're generating electricity or offsets, right? That has a change.
My question is about an exit clause, like I.
And they all have them.
I don't have an exit clause in my, the ones we have through our business, so I don't know.
But don't, but, but we as a, a public entity, we're required to have that because we only have the one year that we can collect money, so we have.
When they're presenting this to you, they're aware that you need that in the contract.
Yes, I know that. It's not a free exit. Usually, right? It's a percentage of lost or whatever, but it's, there is an exit clause.
Yes, it's a non-appropriation clause, and it's required by the state.
Similar to your cell phone clause.
Yeah.
I've just never had one with.
I've never seen a.
With a supplier, right?
So I've, uh, maybe unfortunate, I've never seen it where the rate's gone down from what I've locked forward, right? I, I have caught the bottoms a couple times and been very lucky if it's gone soaring. But um, so i- if it ever did, say we locked it, I don't know, twelve cents, right? Because like, they were coming in around nine, but I haven't looked recently.
That's actually what he said.
Nine?
Me, like, but he was trying to get more better, like better rates.
Do you know what we're at now?
I don't.
Probably, you can get a rate at nine or ten. I could do it for two years and go in a day, you know.
So like, yeah, I can, I'm just one person.
I can get a twenty month at nine point nine and a thirty-two month at nine point eight four.
Yeah, yeah, so they're approaching ten, so they went up like sixteen percent, yeah. But, because I locked back in November, mine had, was gonna run out next November and I locked it forward again. But no, I think it's a great idea.
I can.
Oh, I'm fine, just Jamie's fine with you doing it by yourself. I'm fine with that too, but would the board prefer that it be like one board member designation, certain type of contact and, and then a kind of joint approval? Or just give Lori?
I don't, I don't need that.
I'm very comfortable with these.
I don't think Lori needs to have approval. I think if I were Lori, I would want that double backing that hey, I, I ran this by them, they said, okay, so that's, I would, I would defer her.
Oh, sorry, I actually do need approval whether you're giving it to me now or later, just because it's a multi-year contract.
So, alright.
But I, I think like, if you give me permission to do it.
Then I'm gonna make a motion to authorize Lori to go into an electricity contract for up to twenty-four months.
Second. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Alright, thank you.
Fantastic.
I'd be curious to know who they're quoting, because if they're not quoting, who are they? Paul Fell Power.
Okay, so that's, that was part of my problem, is like, I don't have a complete quote. He just gave me rates, but I wouldn't know who, what, what am I getting?
Yeah. So I'm happy to share a couple more that will give you one.
Alright, are there any questions or concerns on policy I G D K or J L B V B? Let's go straight.
I think that I J, I G T K, that one just makes so much sense.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna approve it right now.
Do we need a second read on that then?
No, it's a rewrite. You can approve it today.
I make a motion to, sorry, I make a motion to accept. Oh, jeez.
Changes.
I G D K Sunday events policy, second. I'm waiting the second rate. I wait the second, I wait the second.
Alright, any questions or concerns on that policy? No, all in favor?
Uh, I.
Fantastic, thank you. How about J L D V B? Does anybody have questions concerning?
I have one quick question. Oh, maybe it's in there. So I saw on the back page that has other resources, but we didn't list NAMI as one of the other resources. Is that?
Oh. I should probably do that.
The only reason I picked up on it, Deb, is because I was one of your NAMI trainers.
That's right.
Hey, Deb, what would you think about, well, kind of loaded question, but uh the the adding the Hampshire Rapid Response?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that. As well as in the handbook that I'm bringing to you uh, within the next few weeks, that has also about a dozen different resources as well. If you're okay with it, I'd take the, the resources that we have listed in the handbook and plop them right into the other resources here.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that, and that way they mirror each other.
Sounds great.
Thanks for catching, thanks for catching that, Jamie.
Yeah, that's gonna go off our second reading.
Alright, terrific. Um, did everybody have an opportunity to read the admin reports?
Did we get a motion and uh could be voted on?
I didn't think we needed.
I'll think you have to vote on first reading.
Okay. We can't.
We are so close.
I'm trying.
You're doing a great job in there.
I've made the reports. I, let's see, I made myself some notes. Now I don't even know what they were actually in reference to.
What did they say? Let's hear it.
I wrote that for CPS, I, oh, that's right. The um class sizing for F Y twenty-five and twenty-six indicates that maybe we should look at a, an additional third grade. I don't know if that has come up anywhere. Maybe that's a question for you.
I think we're a little early on that, but I'm, I'm glad that it's being looked at.
Okay, so we'll just wait for more information on that.
Yeah.
I think she politely said, not right now.
I heard that very politely. But it is a concern for me, because the, they do look a little bit like condensing two into the, uh, three into two, and it could be worth noting. Because then you have to look at other things. So my only other note, I think on that, was that I appreciated how uh Sarah, probably Brad involved uh presented the class sizes for the high school being a little different. It was really great info, and I do hope that all goes to the next committees, whether they are one ninety-five, twenty-five, or the sixteen A, or also to the budget committee, but that's great info that we got. So those are my only notes.
Also ship them forward.
Yep.
Bring them to budget. Yeah, I know, I, I missed the last. I don't know how many, sorry.
I, I will say that uh I appreciate the high school principal and assistant principal being at every single event on the weekends that I have been to. They have both been there, or at least one of them, so um I appreciate their, their ability to put off probably some personal days that they would like to have to be in attendance. So I think that principal had problems.
I was gonna.
Your honor face.
I wasn't gonna blow your, oh, whatever, but the, usually with anything high school related, it's required you have a directive on site.
Listen, you have both of them on there. So, and they, and they're coming, one of them's coming ducked out, because she had all sorts of stuff on her face, so.
Alright, any other questions on the admin reports at this time?
Appreciate everybody's time and effort. Thank you.
Alright, fantastic. Uh, just for information, the reorganization study kickoff meeting is scheduled for Monday, March seventeenth. We will notify people if that is in fact happening.
Notify us Monday morning?
Kinda, because we won't know until all the votes are counted on Saturday.
And I'm gonna send something tomorrow morning to everybody and just let them know that.
Yeah, because one of the towns that has it on there does hand votes.
If it does end up going.
Alright, if you're able to put a pretty narrow scope for that seventeen, maybe in a time ending, yes.
Well, if Alstead kept, Alstead will vote tomorrow night, on that. So we might know Wednesday. Only takes one of them. Takes one town.
Yes, if one of those two votes in favor of one ninety-five, twenty-five pro- process for withdrawal study, we will know. I'm sorry.
Thought there were three. I'm, I'm the assistant moderator for Alstead, so I will know tomorrow night whether this passed or failed. Uh, do you want me to send you an email?
Okay, well, yes, so yes, we, we should have a very narrow scope for that, um, that agenda for that Monday.
Or none.
Or none, but in the, in the case that we are having that meeting, it will be very clear.
As long as it's a given, I leave at a certain time, that's okay.
Hey, I've been trying to leave at a certain time all night.
Hey, I have one minute.
No, it's good.
We got time, we got two more things. Uh, we do have a school board workshop on March twenty-fourth. Um.
I have one more.
The N H S B A will be here to talk um with our new board members and just we'll get us all on the same page, pressure course. And then we have a few other things we've just added this evening. The, do you want to add something at this?
Well, I was just gonna make note that, right, N H S B A just sent out the whole course schedule, what's available for new board members, right? And to just let you know, thank you about uh H B six seventy-five, it was already amended again.
Okay.
Since we got this.
So, what does it read now?
Uh, now, the C P I, it goes from three years to five years. Those were both just changed on, I don't know what date it was, but that just got sent out by Chuck. From Scott, Scott's on.
Right, it's like a warning.
It's, it's ugly, yeah.
And the vote is what, Thursday?
So if somebody sees data on that, if you wouldn't mind just sharing it out, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yes, I wanted to get a question. You look like.
I'm gonna make, I wanna make a motion about treasure support.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the treasure support.
All in favor?
Uh, I.
Excellent. Any other business to come before the word?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you all very much.